I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have one change to the agenda. We are removing the temporary alcoholic beverage license application for Woolies. Otherwise, I have no other changes. Correct? On favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, we have an agenda. Minutes from the May 18 meeting.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Bills in between?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Am I hearing her?
Georgia? Oh, no one did.
Yeah.
That's why you don't hear any.
So it wasn't, I didn't get it.
Okay. Um, I'm not sure how you count, but let's see if she calls that.
You can try on the cellphone speaker.
Do you want to call until it's?
You'll call you.
Hello?
This is the second connection. Sorry, I'll be right back. We're still connecting now.
Okay, when did we lose you?
This is the second after we said that we had an agenda.
Okay, so we.
And you have a change on the agenda.
Yes, I removed the Woolies' requests. And then we voted on bills in between and that motion carried without you, so.
Okay, all right.
The minutes?
In the minutes? I thought she said she heard the minutes. Oh, no, I'm sorry, from the 18th. From the 18th.
Yeah, I did not hear that.
Okay. So there was, it passed without you.
Okay.
Okay? And then the bills in between also passed without you. And we're to current claims.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
First page, halfway down. Leather gloves and safety glasses. Who bought those from Motion Industries?
Safety coordinator, Parks Department. It's what she had it charged to.
Is it just Parks or everybody?
That's what she had it charged to.
$500 for first purpose of the home. Well, Steve.
I wasn't here, but I imagine the client reflects.
Do we have any comments?
This has always been an issue in the past, I guess we need to come up with a solution.
Yeah, we voted in the past that, or we made statements to the effect that leather gloves were not to be bought by employees. But now this is the head of the Parks Department that did this?
She's the safety coordinator?
There are $8.20 a pair. There were 12 of one, 12 of another. Some are lined and unlined, there's 12 of another, and then 24 safety goggles. Oh, that's his size. So the safety goggles were $8.25 a piece and the leather gloves were $8.20 a piece.
So is she tracking that, I guess, how many pairs each person gets each year?
I could certainly ask for that.
If that's the smartest thing, in other words, you get someone who doesn't care, they just keep throwing away and getting a new pair.
I believe they are tracking their issue, that way we don't have that waste occurred.
Anything else?
As long as something that's being tracked is watched.
I got some.
On the last page. Right at the top. $1,712.22, publishing. Lawrence and Schiller.
That's a big bid.
Bid board?
Yeah, the Business Improvement District has a contract with Lawrence and Schiller where they all pay them $60,000 or $65,000 throughout the year, so that's just one of those payments.
Okay, that's all, Ann.
Wes?
Front page, Solar Sound Corp. I see they were here doing a bunch of work for $2,1900. Well, you know, for a year I've been complaining about two or three of these streetlights. They're on 24 hours a day. So what does it take, I guess, to make a note, to have these guys fix them while they're there? I've talked about it for over a year.
No one's been working with them, have you?
Some have. We have a contract with Solar Sounds, so if you'd like a streetlight repaired or turned off, maybe let me know and we can go look at it and then.
You can just go look.
Well, I'd like to look at a local contractor, a local electrician and do it.
Well, every day, knowing we understand this is costing us money to keep these lights on 24 hours.
Well, it's never a point to get together and not.
It's been a year, though.
You have to be here for a year.
Okay, anything else, Wes?
Yep.
It's not a point to get together and let us take care of that.
We've got it. Anything else, Wes?
Yep. What's this, plans for the AG Wilson Memorial Fund? Page number? Page five, third bottom.
That was gifted money from a memorial fund for the golf course. That money had to be kept separate based on that person's wishes and that was her spending that money.
No problem, I'm just curious. Here's this guy.
Anything else, Wes?
Nope.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That includes the credit cards. They're all together.
Did Georgia say yes?
Georgia?
Yeah.
You're in favor of approving the current claims?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Motion carried. I have not received any request for communications from the public, but if there's anyone present that wanted to address the council, you can do so at this time. Yes? Yeah, you have to come up to the mic and then you'll even be videotaped. You can sit here if you'd like.
My name is Trace Wisher. My main name is Graff. My brother Johnny worked for the city for about eight years, I believe, before he passed away in 2013.
Are you familiar with your name again?
Trace Wisher.
Okay.
Johnny did all that rock work out at that Chautauqua. And he did it with his mind, he doesn't have it, but his heart and soul.
It was beautiful.
It is. And everything he does, his craftsmanship was always on top. What I would like, and it was talked about after Johnny passed away, was some type of a plaque being put at the sign of Chautauqua.
Entrance?
Yes.
To Upper Chautauqua? Is that where you were friends too?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, they had this built for you Chautauqua sign.
Yes.
And Jim Lively was working on it. My right hand guy.
He's correct. Jim Lively painted and sprayed that sign, yes.
Anyway, he had a little spot for it that he thought it might look nice. Jonathan and I are willing to pay for that. Just type, I don't know exactly, I don't want like a big old thing or anything, but I just want some acknowledgement for him.
Like in memory of or something?
Well, that would even be nice, but you know, just the rock work done by John Edward Graff and I just think that would be really nice for his memory, for his family, me especially. You know, in the 70s and the 80s, it was cheaper to lease here in Hot Springs. Hate to go back and forth from here to California, but our roots have kind of always been here. So I don't know what y'all think, I just would like to have an opinion and.
Good idea.
What I, I think it's a great idea. I love Chautauqua Park, it's beautiful. What I would like.
Put on the next agenda.
To ask that you come up with a proposal of what you'd like it to look like and then the council can vote on it.
Okay, I was just thinking like a.
Get together before then.
Okay, no one, thank you. I was just thinking like a life brass little plaque thing with his name and.
I think we're all okay with looking at a proposal?
You can come to my Parks React meeting, my next one.
Okay.
And bring it there and then I can bring it to the full council, I guess.
Oh, that'd be great.
That's fine, too.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's okay.
Just set that as the 10th of this month.
The 10th?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
Three o'clock in the city hall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other communications from the public?
I got some. I would like to thank the Parks and Streets guys for their help Saturday. The Elks, they provided lunch for us. Those guys, they busted their butts, I mean, they've done a good job, I mean.
And so did you, Wes. So we want to thank you and Craig in that as well.
Hopefully we can get it finished by the end of the month and kids will have a new playground down there. I believe it was the Elks, Gerald and Kathy.
Moss.
Moss that they provided lunch for us and we really appreciate it. So I want to thank those guys. I think there's another organization, Gerald and Kathy, do you remember if it's Quanis or what?
I think they were going to, I just ran into Gerald and Kathy after they just fed you guys and she said it was the Elks, so. I don't know, but thanks, Wes. Oh, there you are.
Yeah, the Quanis provided the meat for the sandwiches and we served it, plus the other stuff.
Well, we thank you.
So the Quanis provided the meat, in case that wasn't heard. All right.
Then I got another deal. There's a company that's, that processes used tires. They're going to be working around this area for probably the next month and I can talk to Misty and Debbie about some money that we have left in this solid waste fund, I guess, so I'll put on the next agenda that I kind of wanted to throw out, throw it out there for everybody to think about. Because the landfill in Edgemont said they're not going to probably be taking tires for several years because they can't gain more grants. So if we want to get rid of our pile, I guess now's the time to start thinking about it.
Would it just be the cities or anybody?
Well, that's a choice that maybe public works may have to make if we want to let people bring in tires and instead of dollar amounts, it's $220 a ton to get rid of them, so.
That'd be a great idea.
Where would they take them?
They take them to North Dakota.
I mean.
Oh, the landfill, if we choose to let people take them to landfill, I guess we could have them, take them out there, but boy, that's a scary deal. We open the gates and we might get.
$220 a ton?
$220,000. We've got some at the airport that we really need to figure out something to do with and.
Yeah, that's a great idea. There's a lot around the city, too.
I figured I'll throw it on the air committee and you guys can talk about it.
There's a pretty good sized amount of them out there at the airport.
Well, that and the landfill. They're really big on the airport.
They like.
Maybe something of a reduced rate for city residents, possibly?
I just talked to them briefly.
Depending on how the fund looks.
I just talked to them briefly and will get your information, maybe he'll call you during your meeting or something, I mean, that's all I got.
Sounds good, Wes.
Great idea, thank you.
Yeah. Landfill, I had one just two years ago. I think it's like every five years they have, it can apply.
Okay, no, I would love to see that happen. Any other communications from the public? All right, I can't see that clock, so it's only 13 after, so I'm going to go to personnel. I believe almost all of that is just informational, seasonal, employees, and one step increase. So I'd like to lump all the personnel together and give them the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Make sure George is in the line.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so we are going to vote on all personnel together, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we got a lot of seasonal employees this summer. Can you? It's 20. New business, I'm going to, we're setting a hearing for June 15, which is our next meeting, for a use permit on review application submitted by Steve Simone for an off premise sign for Stay USA on 638 Indianapolis Avenue. I think it's record pro bowl. So if anybody has a concern about that, please join us on the 15th at 7:15 PM.
My question is, has the county put some kind of moratorium on signs at one point? So I guess we need to check into that, find out.
Actually, Kim will be at our next meeting and she is looking at that, so I agree, it's a great idea and she's going to address that. Item B, Kim Barbieri, our new building planner, city planner, building inspector. Item B, or set another hearing?
The motion.
Oh. All in favor of setting the hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will have a hearing on the 15th at 7:15 PM. Set a hearing, item B, set a hearing for June 15 also at 7:30 PM for a use permit on review application submitted by Deborah and Matthew Wise, request to change use of 702 Jennings, which is the old Bank of the West building, not old, but the vacant Bank of the West building, from commercial to residential. Kim will also be present for this discussion.
Is there a responsibility there? Commercial or residential?
Yes. A lot of buildings on River Street are that way, the ones with the apartments on there.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll have two hearings on the 15th. Item C is a temporary alcohol, like beverage license application for the Hot Springs Vault, June 18 through the 20th for the Miss South Dakota Pageant here at the Mueller Center.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. We've removed item D, item E. As those of you who were present in our last meeting, we had quite a lengthy discussion about a lost cat. So we decided to add an agenda item discussing cat boarding within the city. We do have ordinances that govern this, but if there's anybody who'd like to continue that discussion and talk about it, but we are in a contract with Barnyard Veterinary for any animals that are trapped or, you know, at large in the city limits to be taken to Barnyard Veterinary Clinic on University Avenue. They do have three cat cages and I think four dog or larger animal cages there as well. So, you know, just so you know, we are in contract, we have an annual contract with Barnyard. To do that, if we choose, we have a three-day boarding requirement for our ordinances for cats that appear to be non-feral or diseased or, you know, we don't want to be taking a bunch of sick cats up there because it is a business and they don't, you know, we don't really want to expose all of our customers, you know, possibly to cats that are, we know for a fact, are feral or diseased. But for cats that appear to be domestic, you know, it will be our policy to board them up there per our contract and our ordinances. So I'm open to any other discussion that anybody may have about that. John, I don't know if you wanted to comment anymore than what I've said.
You got something going at 7:20?
I do, this is 7:20.
Can we wait till after that?
Yeah. That's a great idea. So at 7:20, are Joseph and Julia Peckron present?
Sure is.
Walk slowly to the podium. There are a few more seconds till 20 after, but.
Check it for real.
Are you Joseph?
Yes.
Do you go by Joe or?
Yes.
Okay, I saw something signed Joe, so I just wanted to call you by the name you're most comfortable with. It is 7:20, so if you'd like to share with us what the plans are and then we'll open it up to discussion.
For the Red Rock Resort?
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to.
This is for your June malt beverage license request, one's for malt beverages and one's for wine, so you can address both of those.
Yeah, we want to, we brought the Red Rock Resort and we got the hotel and spot going, but on the round level on the south side, we want to get like that beer wine license going and then maybe get like a video lottery ball and stuff in there and have a little bar area and sell their wines to the people up in our room if they want it and stuff.
Oh, so they can take wine back to the room as opposed to serve by the glass? Okay. And be here the same?
Yep.
Yeah.
Eventually, yeah, we're going to have a small restaurant here. We try to coffee order.
This is a public hearing, so if anyone has any concerns about Red Rock River Resort's plans for their malt beverage and their wine license, please let us know right now.
But I understand it isn't a restaurant, is not a restaurant license?
No, it is not. Not currently, anyway. Any other questions? Concerns?
He asked how the beer malt beverage can be in the lottery. Can you add that?
Right.
But you said you are going to have a little bar in there?
Yes.
Where you're going to serve downstairs in that bar, in the video lottery area and the video wine area.
Any other discussion, concerns? Do we want?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All right, the public hearing is now closed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor of both, I'm doing both these licenses at once, just to be clear. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, thanks, Georgia. Motion carried, congratulations and thank you for investing in Hot Springs, appreciate that. We wish you all the best. It's a great place. All right. Because I'm supposed to do this. These are sealed bids. We also, at this time, are going to be opening the sealed bids for the five Yamaha golf carts that we surplus a month ago. And so, there's one.
Two of them.
This is from Kennedy Enterprises from Spearfish, South Dakota, for $1,700. Sorry.
Is that a piece or for all five?
All five. Pardon?
No.
This is from Kennedy's Northern Hills Golf Cart, this is also Spearfish. This appears to be the same person, same company. I believe this is the same company. One's called Kennedy's Northern Hills Golf Cart and then the check says Kennedy Enterprises. The addresses are the same, though.
They have both for the same amount of money.
And they're both for the same amount of money, $1,700.
So we only have two.
So we only have two. That came with the check. All right. And this is Joe Masket, who is three addresses for Omaha Gearing in Colorado, Palmer City, Our offer for five non-running Yamaha golf carts outside the car barn at Southern Hills Golf Course, which we inspected on 11/7/14, is as follows, and they list those, and their bid is for $1,600. So I believe we order to the higher of the two, which would be this Kennedy Enterprises for $1,700. We all okay with that?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
Do we have the right to reject all bids on this or it seems kind of low on this because of one of the, that the merf sold for what, $1,500, I believe, but it was running, but.
These are club cars, which is different.
These are what?
They run along. But they're parts.
They're just parts of them?
Yeah, I don't think they run. I could be wrong.
No, they've been cannibalized already, they're for parts.
Any other discussion?
They are only for parts, is that what I heard?
Any other discussion?
Anybody got an idea of what they would be worth outside of what we've already been
You seem to both be in the same vault. Are you concerned, Misty?
Gordy's usually our, huh? Gordy is usually our price.
He's either, he didn't want him, he wasn't interested, so.
Well, bird in the hand is better than two in the bush.
All right. Any other discussion? So all in favor of accepting the $1,700 bid from Kennedy Enterprise?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, motion carried. Can you send that to Misty? Okay, back to, um, John?
Yes.
All right, can you join us up here?
I'm John Wisher, the current ACO for Hot Springs, and I just wanted to first find out, is there any issues with the city running their own kennel for the feral cats that are trapped? I went through the ordinance, I don't see anything that needs to be changed in the ordinance to do this. Section 4, 8.04, .010 states segregation of animals, the shelter, and states verbatim that the shelter may be either constructed and operated by the city or the city may enter into a contract with a vet. So I don't know if "and" has to be put in there, "and/or" operated by a veterinarian or, I don't know what the legality is on that as far as ordinances go.
The city used to have their own kennel after years ago, it's gone, then can't.
Where?
Landville.
The Barnyard charges $12 per day for any cat and if it falls on a weekend or a holiday, it goes to $15 a day. The cost of me taking any feral cats out to our facility is the cost of the food. It was $275 was the cost of the purchase for eight cages. And that, I talked to Dave today, the previous ACO, and he's trapped 35 cats just behind Castle Manor. There's different feral cat communities and I know I'm going to be setting more and more traps out and I think it's going to save the city quite a bit of money by the city, by me housing them out there, unless it's an obvious pet, declaw, collar, cliff deer, crop tail, you know, those will go to Barnyard. But any suspected ferals?
Do we have? Do we have, do we have a machine to read chips if they have a chip?
Barnyard has one.
Barnyard.
So, because once a cat is in a trap. You can't really tell if it's a feral or somebody's pet, they just go bananas in there. You know, feral cats come in all breeds, all colors. And so this way, I'll hold them for three days and like I said, the pets will go to barnyard because that's more after where the owner will be go, go looking for their pet. And they, you know, anybody can contact me and I'll tell them what I have out at the city kennel also. So. I trapped nine cats the week before last in one feral community and that would have been, you know, fifty dollars per cat to house a barnyard. So you can do the math, it's five hundred dollars a week.
Do we have a space out at the, at the. MRF that's going to be inside that we can use?
It's an enclosed, enclosed, you got the pictures Cindy?
I, I didn't bring them, I'm sorry.
Okay, I did put sides on the kennel.
I did have pictures of.
The kennel's been constructed, it's got two tarp sides, a closed back, a slanted corrugated metal roof. And I have four cages on an upper shelf and four cages on the lower shelf. So it's well ventilated, it's not a total enclosure, but it will keep any of the elements out of there.
Do you have it on your cellphone?
My cellphone's out in the truck.
Is that movable too?
No, it's securely bolted to the. At the city yard behind the big main shed where the garbage cans are stored. Yeah, out by the concrete pile.
Are you going to be doing all the cleaning of the cages?
I got running water right there, actually it's a cistern I put out there, a gravity bed. And yeah, they, they got the pans, you can slide out and rinse off, you know, and put in there. And I'll, I'll be responsible for making sure that all of them, you know, have their water and food. So that would be all out there also.
Who would be your backup in the event that something happened to you?
Cindy. No, I'm sure I could get one of the guys working out there at the city to do it.
We're going to talk, John.
Also.
Comes with the position.
The. Of course, if somebody comes into barnyard, say forty-eight hours into the impoundment of their animal, say that is my cat, barnyard gets reimbursed by that owner for the boarding fees, which would be twenty-four dollars. We, the city, could charge a boarding fee if somebody comes out of my, at the city's facility and says, hey, that's my cat and it's been in there for two days. We can negotiate ten dollars a day, you know, and charge them twenty dollars to, for the impoundment fees and reimburse some money like that.
And he's, we're just in discussion proposing.
What's that?
I say we're just currently in discussion. I just want to make sure that. So you remember this is just a discussion.
As in discussion, after the seventy-two hour period, are we talking about?
Right.
What are you going to do with them then?
The feral cats will be humanely disposed. Euthanized. In a humane manner, that's what it states here in the ordinance. Unless I could find a rancher who desires cats or somebody, they can also adopt the cat if somebody wants to adopt the cat. I make every effort to relocate them out of the city limits if that's all at all possible.
Ferals are very hard to.
Some of the ranchers really don't care, but I.
I know, I had twenty-three of them.
I, yeah, I, I kind of ran out of, it's posted on the.
I see you guys, I'll get to you.
So, anyway, that's all for me, I just.
Okay, hang on, John, Misty, did you have a comment?
I was just wondering, and it doesn't look like it, if our contract prohibited us from providing the same service that the person we ventured into the contract provides. It doesn't look like it does, have you visited with her about your ideas?
Yes, I was in there today, that's where I got the prices.
Cindy has called me as well.
I got the prices of the boarding fees today and, yeah, because the ordinance does state shelter may be either constructed and operated by the city or the city may enter into a contract with a vet, veterinarian. So I don't know if the word and has to be put in there, does it make it, they could have both or not, I don't know. That's all for me.
Oh, there's a couple people behind you.
Oh.
Oh, so just hang on, John. Val, I'll let you go first there and then Kara.
My question was if, I don't know if I missed it, but you said if somebody contacted you and you had, the city had their cat.
Yes.
And they could pick it up for a fee or something, do you check to see if they've been spayed or neutered first before? They can pick them up?
I, I don't believe spay and neuter, muttering isn't required by the city licensing and necessary.
So you'll check that though?
That, that has, yeah, they'd have to be current on that. And they could go to barnyard or city hall and they get the tags, shots, of course, at barnyard or Fall River, wherever they choose, but. What I'll do is, I'll follow up on that, I'll give them three or four days and then follow up and make sure it's done.
Thank you.
Kara?
Could we have discussion with Battle Boat Humane Society after the seventy-two hour period, there are no cal shelter?
I've discussed with them and they are full, they, they can't take anymore.
I think they've got like a hundred and sixty out there now.
Yeah. They're, they're at maximum capacity for cats.
Have you had a discussion with cats now?
Who, is that out of Custer?
That's, no, there's a local animal shelter.
Just a mud house.
Oh, the mud house, yes. Yes, I, I have dropped off the cat over there too. She won't take total feral cats if they're totally feral. You know, where it's obvious they're just matted and, you know, full of. Obviously not somebody's pet, they won't take it.
And would those cats at the city shelter, the proposed city shelter be tested also or scanned for the chip?
Oh, at the city shelter, scanned for a chip?
Taken into barnyard before you did euthanize and after that seventy-two hours?
Yeah, the ones who, who appear to be possibly somebody's pets will go to barnyard, but the ferals, I could do that just to make absolutely sure that it's not chipped.
Good idea.
Is there a fee for that?
No, no, she'll scan it.
Hey, Cole, is it one time, do you have a machine that reads?
I talked to Dave, his don't work. I guess they've evolved these chips to where you have to get a universal type. Yeah, I talked to him about that, he said it doesn't work, so.
What did the city do before? I mean, what was, what was the protocol before, what was happening to the feral cats? It's not just like Hot Springs just boomed with feral cats. What's been going on, what's been for years, what's been, what's been happening to them?
What did John or David Green say, who was the ACO at that time?
I'll have to ask him what he did with those.
Sorry.
But I was reading the ordinance extensively and what brought this all up, everybody knows is the, the, the person about his, his beloved cat a few weeks ago. You know, accusing me of trapping his pet cat. So this is to alleviate any future misunderstandings or whatever. And it also does give the owner seventy-two hour period in which he could go inquire about his cat he can't find. And see if I, see if, see if the ACO did pick it up. I'm all there.
We definitely have ordinances that govern what we do with stray animals or animals that aren't licensed or outside their control of their owner. So, I know, I highly recommend that you take a look at those ordinances if you're not comfortable with the way the city handles this, but it is per ordinance from, I think, two thousand and one. I mean, it's not a new ordinance by any means, so we encourage you to work with your council if you want changes to it. Thanks, John. We're just doing a discuss, oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to clarify, could I start this tomorrow or does it have to need further? It doesn't seem to break any of the current ordinances.
If the council wants, I'm going to let Bob talk and then I'll let the council decide what they want to do.
Okay.
My, my question is for you.
Oh, it is, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were coming.
What's the humane method you're going to use to put the animals down?
It's a twenty-two rifle. Which is. I, I, that's why I choo, I choose to, you know, try to find a low, a home for them. Is, like I said, I got them on Facebook and everything else, encouraging ranchers and. And that way.
And you're confident it's going to be a single shot kill?
I'd make every attempt.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Since you mentioned Facebook, is there any way that each cat that's put in the facility could be on the city's website or the city's Facebook page or something?
I could do that, my wife.
Place where people can look.
Right, my wife, Therese, has two Facebook pages, one's Fall River County Hot Springs Four-Legged Friends and Fall River County Hot Springs Lost and Found. Every dog that I pick up and I can't locate the owner, I take two pictures of it, it's posted on both of those websites.
Since you're an official of the city, I think should be on an official city website or city Facebook page rather than somebody's personal one.
Who's going to do that?
Or some other community. Well.
You guys have no idea how many animals he deals with every day, every week, every month. We have people that are.
We would have to have someone full-time, I mean, not full-time, but definitely.
My concern is that someone's made the decision as to what a feral cat is or what a pet is.
Well, if it's not in the control of their owner. I mean, we need to look at, that's why I encourage you to look at the ordinance if you're not happy with the ordinance, but his job and mine are to enforce the city ordinance.
I'm very happy with the ordinance, I just think we should communicate as much as possible.
I think what they.
We have a volunteer doing it for us.
We have two hundred followers on those two websites, which are dedicated strictly to the animals of Hot Springs.
And if I see it on, sometimes I lift them on the swap, I'll put them on both.
We got, we got people that are pinging how these cats spay and they drop, they bring them back in town, drop them off. That's another problem, we have people dropping their cats off at Butler Park and they're going out through the neighborhoods and multiplying. And people who have cats unwanted, they just drop them off on the side of the road somewhere.
I just want to commend him before what he has been doing because Fall River County Swap and Fall River Lost and Found and everything, I see him all the time and as much as I hate it, because it's like an ASPCA commercial very sad and see, it's a really awesome effort on your part.
It has an eighty percent success rate. Eighty percent of the animals that are posted on there, that goes back to their owner, somebody recognizes it.
I just want to tell you, just from my perspective, I think we've made a valiant effort.
I agree, I mean, this wasn't done before and so we are trying a lot harder to get donors back with their pets.
You can go behind the old Castle Manor and dog the cat if you like, that would make his life a lot easier.
There are, there's a couple other places where there's free cats.
Be linked from the official Hot Springs site? Can you be a link?
Might be able to add it in the index.
Fall River County Lost and Found and Fall River County Swap, anybody just clicks join and you can join.
Yeah, I mean.
And you get no.
Bar will.
It's a volunteer effort to do that, so, I mean, we can, we can look into that, but I'm not sure. All right, any other?
I got one other question for John. When I see you, you're basically volunteering for seven days a week with us still, if you get it going.
I'm all currently working seven days.
Well, I understand that this job is, but it's going to probably be more, you know, if you get a bunch of cats out there, you got to take care of them every weekend, I'm just.
Yeah, I, I live less than a quarter mile from the city yard, it's no problem. And I think if I put, fill their holes up with food and water, they're probably good for, get twenty-four hours right there, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be, it'll actually be a lot less time consuming rather than processing them.
Chasing them out of barnyard.
Yeah, here, I can just, I'll keep a ledger going there, you know, when actually they're getting in, what cage number and, you know, keep track of the news and.
All right. Do we want to take any kind of action or? On his proposal or? Look at it next week, okay, next time.
Next meeting?
Yeah. We just had this discussion, John, so we'll have to.
Okay, so. Is that regarding me next, next?
Fifteenth.
Actually, I think that kind of falls under personnel, it's part of your job and I think it's between Noel and Cindy to make the decision whether you can start tomorrow or next week or whenever. I don't think it really needs a council deal. As long as it falls under the policy, it calls ordinance.
Well, we'd like to, it's right, we'd like to enforce it.
I have the cages now, I, my last six cages just came shipped.
All right, John, we'll talk tomorrow?
Talk tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your compassion for the pets of Hot Springs and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Oh, all right, old. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah. Craig, did you want to talk about that or do you want me to just get it on?
I just want to get it on. All the cages up there are plain body, not placed there, holding there or metal, so.
Yeah, I. I am fine with that, we just need to make sure that we realize that this will cost the city taxpayers some money to get it cleaned up, but we will put an assessment on the property if that's what you guys want to do.
And you do want to apply by yours?
Um, I, I'm, there's lots of yards that fall on this case, so. We've already given this one notice, we did receive confirmation that the owner received the letter, right?
I will check on that.
Okay, we're going to check on that first because. I've heard conflicting.
Sit right in here and look.
This is the letter that was sent.
This was sent to the owner.
You sent a certified?
And we are going to check to see if we, if the owner did receive the letter and if so, we will. Well, it would have been during the period that Noel was gone and if it was addressed to him, it didn't come to my desk, so we need to check on that, he's just back today, so he will look into that first thing tomorrow, I'm sure. All right. Now, business, discussion of possible action regarding U-turn signs on Main Street, I think there was.
I don't think we need it, everybody makes a U-turn there now.
They're doing a good job on their own.
I've had several people ask me, they've asked in the past, we bought signs, they know we bought signs and they're wondering why we haven't put the signs up and why we are not. We're going to talk about following ordinances, that's an ordinance, you can't do a U-turn on Main Street.
Well, that's a state law.
Absolutely, created by an ordinance, so.
The lines were, you need to go back to when you were sixteen in your book.
I know that.
You can't do, you're not supposed to cross the double yellow line, we had the lines painted again down Main Street, we'll call it River Street. So it is illegal to do a U-turn across a yellow line.
I've seen people do it right from their law enforcement now do a thing about, I've seen that down behind the car just a week ago.
Well, I know for a fact they give at least warnings for.
Well, my point is, I guess, we bought the signs, we, the taxpayers paid for these signs, are we not going to put them up? Are we going to put them up? I mean, the council voted a long time ago to put them up, so I guess my question is, why haven't they been?
The wrong signs were ordered, this was, I know, a long time ago before.
Wrong signs.
They're too large to be put on the lamppost. The lamppost cannot take the weight in a wind, a high wind situation with those that big of a sign.
So then I guess I make the motion tonight, the order is right, U-turn signs for our poles.
Before that's acted on, the DOT recommends we actually apply paint to the road surface, say name change.
You got a letter that showed me that? They're not fighting about the yellow lines, so you think they can look at a U-turn location?
violation or...
You think the sign will stop them? That's a sad thing. If the message is no U-turns.
They used to have U-turn signs all along.
The double-yellow line is their...is their personal choice to violate law. We do need to enforce it and I have gotten several complaints from people going, they've been receiving tickets lately. So, we are doing...
Well, I've never been...I've never heard anyone too happy to receive a citation, so...
But they're getting them and they will be getting them for U-turns as well.
We only have one place and that's across the street from...
Two places.
On River.
You can do it across from Century House.
From where?
Across from the Century House.
What is that?
The Evans.
The Evans?
Andy called me back, too. So, nobody's talking about Evans Hotel.
I didn't know that.
Menacata and River, you can do a U-turn at that intersection. You can also do one by Gus's Ice Cream and...
The old BHP.
Or please Department, Barton House.
Yeah, that's where I am. Yep. Uh, I'm just gonna start in the front row and I'll move back.
Your discussion says Main Street. Are we talking River Street and not Main Street?
River Street.
Okay. And the former police chief told me that any place there is not a double-yellow line, you can turn around, which is every intersection that's controlled.
That's why you can do it in front of Century House or Evans Hotel?
Or Albany or Baltimore.
Down Chicago.
It's what he told me. But it's on River Street that you're talking about. And I don't know how you can enforce an ordinance if it don't count to any...
It's state law. We follow state law. It's a state road, state law.
Well, like I said, I'll make a motion, we buy the correct signs and put a few up and down River Street.
I've got several others that have comments. We can do that first.
Sure.
Lindsay, did you have your hand up? Okay, Val?
I was at meetings over the last three years and this has come up numerous times. Some of the problems people complained about was they didn't want more signs on our streets because it wasn't tourist-friendly. But my problem is, it's not getting any better. The U-turns are ridiculous. They're all the time. There's been a double line. It's been repainted three times. This conversation's been going on for three years and three years that sign or that...those yellow lines have been repainted several times. So, contrary to whether it's against the law or not, it's not working. So, I would like to see something done because it's a risk to pedestrians and everything. The other day, a bunch of kids almost got hit because somebody ripped a U-turn and somebody was trying to cross the road.
It's state law.
We've had accidents. I mean, it's just...
I don't care.
I got my truck key because I mentioned something to somebody about U-turning in
a double-yellow line. That's what I was thinking.
I have people lined up here, Craig. I'm gonna pull up here.
There's those signs right in the middle of the road, those that says wait for pedestrians to cross and they don't pay attention to that either. So, a sign on the post over here when a sign in the middle of the road could almost hit...
It's bright orange, yeah, yellow.
I don't see how that's going to make...
Say, I see them work every day. I drive through town. I see people stopping on either side.
Well, I take that riverwalk and I can assure you, they don't stop. They're here to stop.
They don't have them anymore.
I've even had the police go by it and not stop.
And U-turns, not stop signs.
Yeah, what's that?
Asperit's call.
The yield for pedestrians.
I just don't think more signs is gonna make people stop.
No.
Well, I'm sorry, guys. Just enforce it.
It is a historical history.
Hear that series about it?
I am serious because we spent money on the signs and apparently we're not gonna hang them up, so I either enforce the ordinance or...
I voted against it at that time because I thought it was a waste of money.
All right, can you...
No.
Any part of that from a reserve perspective?
Not other than...they say yield pedestrians, not stop.
No, I'm talking about the U-turns.
Oh, U-turns.
Agreed during the day.
I know for a fact they've given tickets for that, so...
Hand out more.
We can only enforce more.
Next weekend, there comes the signs back downtown.
They're down.
Are they?
Yep, they're down.
All that I can do is bring it to the table. People ask me, so I try to do the people's will, so I guess if you guys don't want to put the signs up, then I guess we either need to make the law enforcement enforce the ordinances or do away with the ordinance, I guess, do your will.
I think Cindy already said that they're giving tickets, so they're enforcing something.
Well, you know, Carl, we get a monthly please report and, you know, it tells you exactly how many U-turn violation citations were written.
How many were there?
None that I've seen. None, zero.
Okay, did you want to do anything more with that item? Go to committee reports, Carl?
Uh, no admin promotion until the...is it the 10th?
Yes.
When you take your floor. Second meeting.
Uh, Georgia gave the council a handout from her advocate's meetings. We did receive that, Georgia?
Yes.
Carol Anne is not present and I don't believe they've had...they'll have a meeting probably this Wednesday. So, she'll probably report next time. Wes had a...as he already talked about, a big weekend. Any other items from your committee?
No.
All right. Brookside, we have some new equipment. It's great. Um, causal report next time. White.
Public Works, uh, May 26th, we had a meeting. We were asked to come up with a long-term solution for Valley View Drive, which is a steep hill with lots of potholes and, uh, we have two...or two options there, guys. I think we can keep patching what we got and when we get heavy rains, it's gonna be a problem. Or we can get the homeowners to come together and petition the city for a street assessment and future councils will determine how much the city will pitch in. And I don't know what else to do with that because it's...it's steep and we can keep patching it or if the people want to put some money in, they have a nice road. Garden Street Water Main has over 500 feet installed. We pushed the issue to get that street opened up, especially for the pageant and stuff. The new trickle filter is up and running. That should help eliminate a lot of the odor from the sewer plant. The concrete projects around town have been delayed by the constant wet weather. We also wanted to make it clear, we'd like to see the lot mode where the water fill station's gonna go. It's...weezer getting...
It's jungle.
They got her?
No, it's jungle. It needs to go...
Yeah, I mean, the city needs to try and get care of its property, too, so...
That's right.
And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dwight. Okay. Misty has a big day tomorrow. Yeah, election day for those of you that don't know. Election day tomorrow, 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM, polls be open at the Mueller Center. We need to set the meeting for the official canvas. The council will do an official canvas. It has to be done by law by the ninth. Harley, I guess typically did it the Friday after the election. If Friday the 5th works for those of you to do that, please let me know. If you propose another day, just know it needs to be done by law by the ninth. You coming?
I'm leaving. I'll stay at 4:30 in the afternoon on Friday, so...
Yeah, Friday don't work for me either.
You guys want to get back to Misty and give her your...
We actually got it at the...
Yeah, I think we should say that.
Well, we don't have Carol Anne.
What about next Monday? What about being at 7?
George, are you gonna be around next Monday? It'll be the 8th. Are you gonna be back?
Yeah. I'll be back.
I don't think everyone needs to be here. It just needs to be a forum.
You have to have a forum.
So, either Friday the 5th or Monday the 8th?
Monday the 8th is good.
The 8th, we have airport board meeting and open house.
Isn't that at 3:00? Could we do it at...
We have one...well, the board meeting's at 2:00 and then the open house is...
Can we do it at 9?
First thing in the morning.
8?
There you go. 8 o'clock.
8:00 Monday morning, 8? Yeah.
And you won't be here at City Hall. Well, Carol Anne will be back.
At City Hall.
Is she out of town or...
I don't know. I haven't...I will get ahold of Carol Anne. Looks like we have at least one...
Sounds like 7.
Two, three, four, five, so...
Still have four?
For sure. Okay.
Very good. All right. I also want to talk a little bit about the 2015 Elected Officials Workshop, Wednesday, July 8th, put on by the South Dakota Municipal League. Looks like there's some interest from Georgia, Cindy, Krista Spillane, interested in going. Anyone else?
I would.
Okay. We have reserved a few rooms, just have a block of rooms reserved. We'd like to see as many people interested in going and then those of you elected or staying on, if you're interested in going, please let me know. It's a...the South Dakota Municipal League puts on the workshop and if you haven't been before, I read some notes after Tim went that he said it was very beneficial, so I want to let you know that date, July 8th, Wednesday, July 8th, and it's in here. We have rooms to stay the night before if you're interested in going. And then I just found out today that I was awarded $175 scholarship to attend any training. So, yay. We're a little bit more, but we'll take every penny we can get. And then tomorrow's our big election day. That's all I got. Once that's over, maybe I'll focus a little bit better.
Yes, we're looking forward to this being over. Okay. Um, Nolan?
Yes.
Welcome back.
Thank you. A thank you to the council and of course to the employees for continuing business as usual in my absence. I appreciate the work everyone did to step up. Just a few notes. The next meeting on the 15th will be debuting the new Evans Plunge logo and that'll be following up our contest we had this winter after a professional revision was done to that. So, we'll be able to show off the new brand of Evans Plunge, the first attempt at the city's ownership with a stamp on the Evans Plunge facility in history. We'll also, this summer, go into a new different way to budget and that includes requesting those with funding requests to approach the city, Misty first, with to obtain our fundraising request form or fund request...
Budgetary funding request form.
Budgetary funding request form. This will standardize the procedure for asking for city donations, city funding. It helps us be more accountable to the public and it helps us better use public finances. With that, our budgeting system's also a little bit different. We'll be using Excel and be more focused on performance-based budgeting, so we're shifting toward the old copy and paste from last year and increase a little bit to a more focused approach is what do we want our money to do for us? What do we want our money to do for our community? And this will definitely involve a more active role by the department heads in the process. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Nolan. I actually have several items. First of all, I wanted to thank Keep Hot Springs Beautiful. They did...I know I don't see the kids are here, but she had to reschedule and to reschedule anything is always a challenge and I just really wanted to thank them publicly for cleaning up Hot Springs. They really worked really hard. It wasn't great weather even at their second attempt, but they worked really hard at that, so really appreciate their efforts. Also wanted to let you all know that Elsie Hill is still closed until further notice. That's the road. It's the first road on the left after you go up Menacata from...I think it's officially called Hammond. There's not a street sign there, which we'll work on. But we had a very large boulder fall down in...during a rainstorm. We have another one that looks a little iffy. And until we have a good inspection by our city engineer and the streets department, we're gonna keep that closed. The members of...the pastor or father, Claude, I forget his last name, for the Episcopal Church is aware that that road is closed and they did have service Sunday at a different location, but we really feel that that's a public safety issue and that road is gonna remain closed until we feel that it's safe to be traveled on again. I wanted to also let you know that today is the first day of Kim Barbieri, who's our new city planner and building inspector's program called Clean Sweep. She's going to be focusing on property owners like the one in the nuisance report we just talked about earlier and cleaning up our city's private properties around the city. That's a program that she's going to run between June 1st, today, and September 30th. The focus change that she has on this is that if you need help cleaning up your yards, you know, give her a call, give us a call at City Hall. If, you know, you really have a desire to comply with our ordinances with your property and you just feel that you can't do that, we'd like to know what it would take to make that happen. So, we really have this as an overall goal to support this program and to get our city's properties and neighborhoods cleaned up this summer. There's an article, correct me if I'm wrong, in The Star as well, that will be coming out on that program.
Sure knew she's got an ad and I haven't talked to her about anything.
Okay. So, if you want more information on that, is that gonna be also on the city website?
Yep.
Okay.
And Facebook page.
And Facebook. All right. Wes already talked about the Brookside Park equipment. They really worked very hard Saturday to get that up. Really appreciate it, guys. I know you were there all day. And let me make sure my list...oh, yeah, one more thing. Our draft master plan, like I said last time, is reviewed by the South Dakota Department of Transportation, the FAA, and so that's now ready for public consumption. We will have a meeting on June 8th here at the Mueller Center, public open house at 6:00 PM. So, if you have interest in the airport, please join us next Monday, 6:00 PM, right here, to discuss the airport master plan. We'll also have a 2:00 PM meeting for the board members and any other, you know, council that would like to join us at 2:00 PM out at the airport terminal building. And they're working on Chapter 4. The taxiway, which I believe was approved before I was even here, we were getting the grant and application is moving along. I think I need to sign it now. And then also, we did get approval from the FAA that there's no environmental impact. So, that I just got today forwarded to you. So, I think we're ready to get that moving forward, but that's for our parallel taxiway, which was approved last year. Okay, a lot of governments involved, so that moved a little bit slow, but that is still in progress.
Yeah, at least do.
Yeah, three government agencies at least, so...all right. And as Misty brought up, tomorrow is election day. My personal feeling is the best way to honor our veterans is to vote. I don't care, you know, how little things mean to you or how much they mean to you. I...it personally means a lot to me to see...to know that people voted, no matter what, because not everybody in this...on this planet can vote and it is an honor, a privilege, and I really hope to see you all at the polls tomorrow if you haven't already voted. So, thank you and thanks for coming. I do really appreciate you all being here and helping us manage our city. So, thanks.
I have a question. I have a question, and then Elsie Hill, is that city property or is that private road property?
It's in the easement.
Is it?
Yep.
How wide is that road?
How wide?
What's one that's planted?
I don't, I don't know what the easement is, but I've asked Tracy that several times, if that was private property or, but it is, um, in the easement. Any other questions, anybody?
Yeah, I'd like to request our attorney to be present, and, uh, we have an executive session, the next council meeting, I was under the impression that the attorney was gonna be here tonight, but, uh, I guess not, huh?
We haven't had updates from, I assume, contract to refer, refer to a contract, we haven't received updates yet for that.
Well, I have some other questions, I guess.
Do you wanna call her personally, or do you wanna have an executive legal session on the 15th?
I think we should.
If we don't have an update on the.
I think we should put it on the agenda, I guess, and if, we can always take it off, so I think we should have it on there now, and I might call her and get my questions answered, I guess, then we can, we can remove it.
Okay. Anything else?
Get out and vote, and vote often. Bye.
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 You have a rock there?
It must look like a river valley.
How about just one?
Most police officers.
Yeah, it only takes a few.
If it's conflict for her, it's a conflict for her.
I agree, I agree, we talked about that.